The Joint Planning Commission between the Township of Marshall and City of Marshall is in a word, roll call please.
Banfield? Bright?
Here.
Hodo?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Riggs?
Here.
Woods?
Here.
You have a quorum.
And, uh... We said, so we have a quorum. I'm going to start it out by entertaining the motion from the floor to allow Tim Banfield to be Chair of this current JPC meeting until elections are held to install a new Chair.
I'll make that motion. Johnson?
Motion seconded. Any questions regarding motion? Hearing none, those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those folks saying. In regards to election of officers, I've got a little monologue that I'd like to read and we can have a discussion during that. Regarding election of officers, which is going to be first on our agenda, I was elected Chair in the 9, September 13th, 2022 meeting. And to Chair of the JPC. A rules of procedure that we have adopted for the JPC says that a member elected to position Chair, Vice Chair, and hold that position for one year, that's where the assumption enforced that the elections would be held yearly, new elections. And may not be elected for that position for more than two successive terms. Election held at the 9/12/23 meeting. 11/14/23 meeting. The JPC did not meet in 2024. So this is my interpretation, personal interpretation, but my interpretation rules of procedure. My turn doesn't end until the next selection of officers. Therefore, I'm still serving the first term. Elections should have been held, of course, 9/12/23, 11/14/23. About that time, we had two administrators mitigate their positions from both township and city. Case of the township, of course, the position hasn't been filled. Case of the city, we had a new wonderful administrator who was just getting transitioned into new positions. I'm not saying that anybody was at fault, anybody was at fault for not holding elections, he probably shouldn't be, since I was Chair. And for that, I'm hoping to... Questions are kind of unsavory, but I just... Hearing none, uh... You will entertain that motion to allow Tim Banfield to be Chair until elections start happening.
So moved.
For you.
I'm sorry, point of clarification, did we not just do that? Didn't we have, I made the motion and Aaron seconded it, if I'm not mistaken? So we've already allowed you to do that?
So we'll move on to election of officers. And we'll do that before we approve the agenda. Will Chair entertain? Entertaining anyone who would like to make a motion to move the board? Not say he could be person of the board chair. This is for the next term. Yeah.
Nominating, uh, Tim, Commissioner Banfield for Chair.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate, if she would like to go that route, Joanna Johnson.
There are two nominations, one for Tim Banfield, one for Joanne Johnson. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the, um... That will be closed, and nominations will be closed, and we'll go to a roll call vote. And when you vote, please give your name and then give who you're voting that as well, please.
I'm ready. Riggs?
Uh, Steve Riggs, Joanna Johnson.
Hodo?
Hodo Banfield.
Woods?
Uh, Mick Woods, Joanna Johnson.
Bright?
Bright Banfield.
Banfield?
Uh, Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson?
Johnson, Johnson.
So you have a tie. You have three for Banfield and three for Johnson?
To the best of my ability, understanding Robert's rules, with a tie vote, we need to continue voting. And so we are up for, um, nominations again.
Hodo nominate Commissioner Banfield.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Ms. Johnson.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. Roll call vote, please.
Hodo?
Hodo Banfield.
Woods?
Woods, Johnson.
Bright?
Bright Banfield.
Banfield?
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson?
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs?
Riggs, Johnson.
There's three for Banfield and three for Johnson, there's another tie?
Uh, we'll move to the, to another, um... Nominations. Open, please.
Hodo Banfield.
Woods, Johnson.
Two nominations, Banfield and Johnson, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed for the third time. And roll call vote, please.
Woods?
Woods, Johnson.
Bright?
Bright Banfield.
Banfield?
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson?
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs?
Riggs, Johnson.
Hodo?
Hodo Banfield.
There's three for Banfield and three for Johnson?
And I'll open up nominations again, this will be our fourth nominations.
Hodo Banfield.
And is there any other nomination?
Riggs for Johnson.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed.
Bright?
And vote, please.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield?
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson?
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs?
Riggs, Johnson.
Hodo?
Hodo Banfield.
Woods?
Woods, Johnson.
Three for Banfield and three for Johnson?
Uh, tie vote, again, and we'll move to nominations are open, please.
Hodo Banfield.
Riggs for Johnson. Uh, nomination, any other nominations? Nominations are closed, roll call vote, please.
Banfield?
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson?
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs?
Riggs, Johnson.
Hodo?
Hodo Banfield.
Woods?
Woods, Johnson.
Bright?
Bright Banfield.
Three for Banfield and three for Johnson?
I have a question. Um, Tim, when you were opening up nominations, that was strictly for Chair, not for Vice Chair, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're going to take them separately?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
What does Robert's Rules of Order say about this particular scenario?
Breakfast is served at 7:00 AM.
Yeah.
We, we did our thorough research today, so, um, there is, uh, it's just continual voting. That's the, that's the only answer in Robert's rules. I can have that clarified if you want. Please. Uh, pertinent part.
So Robert's Rules, the use, recognize or recognition of, often held by assemblies of members, can you...
Call out a name while still seated, a nomination does not need a second, a member can be nominated for more than one office, a member cannot be nominated more than one person for an office until everyone has an opportunity to make nominations. That's about it, do you want to see the book, Tim?
Can you go to the vote?
Yeah, give me just one second.
Please.
Well, she's looking, uh, again, bear with me on point of order, but what I was wondering is if we could, and I don't know what's been the history, frankly, but if, you know, we could potentially take both at the same time, and if this was an area of compromise, is to potentially have the Chair be a rep, so be a representative of one entity, and the Vice Chair be the representative of another entity, and I don't know if that's been what's happened here previously.
By the way, that's what we always did.
You did, okay.
We've always done that.
Okay.
And right now, we don't have a Vice Chair, by the way.
Has the Chair always been a City Commissioner?
Oh, no. No, as a matter of fact.
Well, I've looked at, I've never seen a township be in charge of this.
Yeah, Bob Ling was Chair for two years. Yeah, and I took over for Bob in 2022.
All right.
And then prior to that, Matt Davis was Chair, Matt from City Marshal.
I don't have all the back records, so.
We do.
Yeah, I know.
We've, we've got all the way back, so.
Just another point of clarification, in the bylaws section two, the term of elected office, and, uh, Tim, you had, you know, recited, um, as you well know, we have advocated to have a meeting back to 2023, if I'm not mistaken, I, I'm sure the record will show that. Had we have had those meetings, then you may have potentially had those two consecutive terms, is that correct?
If I'd been elected, we didn't have elections on the agenda at that time, so. And that's why, um, it's extremely important for the administrator, for both the city and the township, to take charge of those kind of things and make sure that that's, that we are following procedure.
But it was brought to our attention, correct?
Uh, brought to your attention.
Brought to our attention as a JPC, to have the meetings in August, as indicated on the bylaws, so that we could hold elected, elections.
Yeah, you, you know, even though the procedures say that to hold the meetings in August on a yearly basis, you can hold them anytime you want, past that, and we've done that before, because we couldn't get a quorum together until we had business, um, to deal with, and so that was the main reason for the meetings being held in September and October of 2023.
I think that's where the discrepancy lies, is whether or not the election of officers is indeed business by the JPC. Okay.
Take your time. No baseball game on tonight. Missed that the most on Sunday.
Okay, I'm ready. Election by roll call vote. If the members take a vote by roll call, the same methods are used for a ballot vote can be followed, either voting for all candidates at once or voting for one at one time. If presiding officer should explain the procedures, as the Secretary calls the roll, each member states for whom he or she is voting for, the Secretary records the vote and repeats it to make sure it's accurate. And then there's accumulative voting, and then like ballot voting?
You're still not there yet, you're still not there yet, it's...
I have another question, why you keep looking, so I am reading...
Wait, wait a minute, Brandy, what we're looking for is what happens if they're, one of the main reasons that there's never tie votes is because most boards have odd numbers of people on them. The, and may I say that, uh, I wasn't part of setting up the JPC, I just happened to be on the first JPC, and the reason for the, uh, even number was because we were a, um, advisory board to, uh, the trustees of the township and the council, the City Council of Marshall, that's all we were set up for. And so, uh, and if you live in Marshall long enough, you're related to each other. So we'd never had a problem before with, uh, you know, with a tie vote, so, anyway.
I, just another point of clarification, so, once again, looking at the bylaws, which I know we were all sent copies, and it really talks about what the role of this JPC is, but section two, term of elected office, a candidate receiving a majority of vote of the entire Joint Planning Commission, JPC, membership shall be declared elected and shall hold office for one year.
Correct.
Then it says the same member may not be elected to more than two successive terms, isn't that two separate things?
Well, that was the other thing we found out when we were doing the research, is that if they had defined, defined a term as one year, uh, then that would have solved the whole issue, but they didn't. So a term is, a term is, is intended to be a time from one election to the next election, which was, which would normally be held every year in August.
Because I, I read that differently, I read that you are only elected to serve as an officer for one year, but your term on the PC can't be two, two successive terms.
Well, in this particular case, the, uh, the, the term of, basically by being elected as a Chair, you still have a Chair for during that term period until, uh, you're replaced by the next, um, by the next vote, because we, we didn't have a vote, so that makes me, in my particular case, that makes me Chair for over a three-year period or two and a half year period, because we didn't have another vote to elect another Chair.
Oh, I, I was thinking that's our term of office, not in terms of the officers, like if I'm on this, if I'm on this board, if my term of office and serving on behalf of the JPC is a three-year term, that's my term of office, I can't be on for, say, ever and ever, six years, but the, the term of office for Chair is one year. But, yeah, that's how I, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Under section two, Article four, section two, term of elected office, a candidate receiving a majority vote of the entire Joint Planning Commission membership shall be declared elected and shall hold office for one year, same member may not be elected to more than two successive terms. Elected. Not appointed. So for instance, the way we do it in Marshalls, we...
You gotcha, I understand.
Yeah, the way we do it in Marshalls, we're appointed for a three-year term on the JPC. And then you're supposed to sit out a, a year before you get appointed again. I, um, part of my research was to ask the founding people.
Did you anticipate, did you anticipate this being an issue?
I didn't anticipate it, it's never been an issue for the last nine...
I, I was just wondering, because there's a lot of research that went on, curious.
I did, I did the research, uh, so that I made sure that I was clear, because, um, if I had resigned as Chair, then I don't know what we would have done, I guess somebody else would have had to...
Robert's rules, yeah, has that.
Or if we would just have met in August.
Well, now, if that, isn't that what I asked for?
Uh, any other comments? We'll move on to nominations again, uh, for the sixth time, nominations?
Hodo Banfield.
Riggs, Johnson.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations closed, are closed, and roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs?
Riggs, Johnson.
Hodo?
Hodo Banfield.
Woods?
Woods, Johnson.
Bright?
Bright Banfield.
Banfield?
Banfield, Banfield.
Three for Banfield and three for Johnson?
Tie vote, um, any other comments before we move on to number seven?
Did we ever get clarification on what happens?
Oh. You find anything in there, Brandy? Nothing about a tie vote?
Could you buy it off?
I think they're in the bylaws.
Nothing in the bylaws.
How about that?
Mainly because hardly anybody ever puts a even number of people on a, especially a voting. Uh, we'll move on to, um, on number seven, um, nominations, uh, open. Hold on. Uh, any other nominations?
Woods, Johnson.
Any other nominations? Hearing seeing none, nominations are closed, and roll call vote, please.
Reggs, Johnson.
Hodo?
Hodo Banfield.
Woods?
Woods, Johnson.
Bright?
Bright Banfield.
Banfield?
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson?
Johnson, Johnson.
Three for Banfield and three for Johnson?
I think, just another point of clarification, although the bylaws don't say, say what to do if there's a continuous tie, it does say it has to be by the majority of the JPC to be elected, so I think that's what we're driving for.
Uh, any other comments? Marcia, just got a question.
Quick close search, I don't know if that is allowed, but I couldn't really look in the book based on what I'm finding online.
Everybody okay with that?
Short recess?
If you need one, do you need one?
Well, I think the commission as a whole could use a short recess to allow Marcia to do her thing, and then... But you confer further, so.
Would you like a room?
No, always good.
Okay. Uh, we'll recess for 10 minutes, is that good? We'll start up again at, uh, 7:33.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Everyone, oh, is there any way, is there any way, give half of, okay, I'm just trying to get the crap, so you can- Is there a way that we could give a motion to or for the rest of the nominees?
Sure.
Okay, but you know what I mean, like, she said it. She said that, she said that, but she feels that, but really, I think they're going to be pushing it down, but the rest of them, yeah. Sorry, I don't understand.
Awesome, sorry, Greg. Never. Right, this is her. Uh, wait for her, just, just.
And directly to the session at 7:24. 7:34, I'm sorry. And we're up to, uh, number eight, uh, nominations are open.
Hodo Banfield.
Riggs Johnson.
Uh, are there any other nominations? Uh, hearing none, nominations clo- are closed and roll call vote please.
Hodo.
Hodo Banfield.
Woods.
Woods Johnson.
Bright.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield.
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs Johnson.
Three for Banfield and three for Johnson.
When we last left him, somebody was looking something up. Did we come up with anything?
We did not come up with what you do if there is a tie vote. Officially. Um, Marcia?
All right, what I had found online was, like, if there was a president position that was, like, weighted, they, you know, you could have them weighted more on their vote, but we don't have that situation, so my apologies.
Just like the Senate.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We found on Robert's rules, it sounds like you just keep going until there is a majority. Okay?
Yes, correct, that's correct. Uh, the next nomination is number nine, nominations are open.
Hodo Banfield.
Riggs Johnson.
Any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none, uh, nominations are closed and roll call vote please.
Woods.
Woods Johnson.
Bright.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield.
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs.
Riggs Johnson.
Hodo.
Hodo Banfield.
Three for Banfield and three for Johnson.
Just a comment I want to make, it's been nine times. To me, I think we ought to set a limit. I don't care if it's 15, 20, 30. And if we're still doing this, I think we should adjourn this meeting and you can bring up with another idea.
You can make that nomination, Steve, if you'd like. Anytime.
I'll make a nomination that will try 15 times, which would be-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you can make the motion.
A motion.
To, to either-
End the meeting after 15 tries at electing.
Officer, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to, uh, limit the nomination process to 15, and we're at number 10 right now, so, uh, any other questions or comments regarding that? Seeing-
I have a question. Uh, would it be possible to do the vice chair first before the chair? Try and do it that way? You don't know, I'm asking.
No, no, what, what you're gonna get out of that? Yeah. Is it possible that's, I suppose that's possible, as I suppose it's as possible as anything, but I don't know what you're gonna accomplish, you know, but you're gonna eliminate, uh, if, if that person's elected, you will eliminate that person from, you know, running for chair, obviously, so.
But there's nothing preventing anybody from making a motion to say, I nominate this person as chair and this person as vice chair.
Uh, we did talk about that, um, in the same motion, in the same nomination.
There's, there's nothing, I mean, I can make that motion and there's nothing preventing it in our bylaws in any way.
This, this discussion is, this, excuse me, this, excuse me, this discussion is between the Joint Planning Commission and you will be given your time. You're out of order. Anything else, Joanne?
No, I was just-
Okay, we're moving on to number 10. Nominations are open.
Riggs Johnson.
Wait, did we call the question to the vote of the motion that was made?
Call the question. Uh, was there any other comments? I should have said.
Does everybody understand what the motion was? Yeah, okay.
And I think the last one was from Carter asking if there, if you could do two at a time. Do chair, and then two at a time. Is there any other comments regarding the motion to limit this to 15? Hearing none, those in favor of limiting, limiting the, uh, nominations to 15, process to 15 attempts signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And the motion passes. And now we'll move on to, uh, number 10. Uh, nominations are open.
Riggs, I nominate Johnson.
Hodo Banfield.
And are there any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, uh, nominations are closed and roll call vote please.
Bright.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield.
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs.
Riggs Johnson.
Hodo. Woods.
Woods Johnson.
Three for Banfield and three for Johnson.
We'll move along to, um, the 11th in the process. Uh, nominations are open for chair.
Did we, did we, I just have a question. Do we clarify if we can do two nominations at once if we decided that we are not?
I don't, uh-
We have clarification on that.
I don't think there's anything in our bylaws that person, you know, precludes that, that I'm aware of.
Yeah, this is, again, this is the same thing I said before. If you do that, then you're eliminating one person from running for chair, which is not a good thing to do because you want the chair to be taken from the entire group, so. And that means that that, uh, vice chair wouldn't be able to run for chairman. So is there, so if the question is, is there anything that says you can't do it?
I think they could still get a nomination from someone else for chair. They just haven't acted nomination for vice chair. That would be my interpretation. You just have to clarify your vote when we do a vote. It's messy, but also not within the bylaws of it.
It's way messier.
I think the only difference is, is once you establish the chair, then that chair can take over the meeting and call the question for vice chair.
Whereas if you were to nominate chair and vice chair at the same time, then that person you're nominating for vice chair can't be chair. And in a small group like this, I think you wanna, want all the options open. Just a comment, is it, so to answer your question, probably is, it is possible. Okay, for the, uh, 11th in our process, nominating process, the nominations are open.
Woods, Johnson.
Hodo Banfield.
Any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, um, the nominations are closed and roll call vote please.
Banfield.
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs.
Riggs Johnson.
Hodo.
Hodo Banfield.
Woods.
Woods Johnson.
Bright.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield three, Johnson three.
Uh, tie vote, moving on to number, any other comments? Moving on to number 12, um, nominations are open for chair.
Riggs nominates Johnson.
Hodo Banfield.
Any other nominations? Hearing, seeing none, uh, nominations are closed and roll call vote please.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs.
Riggs Johnson.
Hodo.
Hodo Banfield.
Woods Johnson.
Bright.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield.
Banfield, Banfield.
Banfield three, Johnson three.
Tie vote, moving on to our number 13. Uh, nominations are open for chair.
Woods Johnson.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing, uh, hearing none, those in, um, roll call vote please.
Riggs.
Riggs Johnson.
Hodo.
Hodo Banfield.
Woods.
Woods Johnson.
Bright.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield.
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Three for Banfield, three for Johnson.
Tim, I have a question.
Yes.
So is Mr. Bright, are you the alternate for the city and taking the place of Tim Fitzgerald, who would normally be the city member? Okay, all right. I just, I thought Tim was gonna be here. Gotcha, okay.
Any other comments? Uh, move on to number 14, nominations are open for chair.
Riggs nominates Johnson.
Hodo Banfield.
Any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, uh, nominations are closed, roll call vote please.
Hodo.
Hodo Banfield.
Woods.
Woods Johnson.
Bright.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield.
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs.
Riggs Johnson.
Three for Banfield and three for Johnson.
And, uh, 15 and are agreed upon last, uh, nominations are open for chair of the JPC.
Hodo Banfield.
Woods Johnson.
Riggs or Woods? Just, just kidding.
One more S is-
Yeah, they're like, that guy. Any other nominations for chair? Hearing and seeing none, nominations are closed and roll call vote please.
Woods.
John- Woods Johnson.
Bright.
Bright Banfield.
Banfield.
Banfield, Banfield.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Riggs.
Riggs Johnson.
Hodo. Three for Banfield and three for Johnson.
And as agreed upon, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to, um, adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same.